Good evening. I'd like to call the Monday, February 27th Board of Education meeting to order, and I would please ask all of you to join me for a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Now, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Now, we will have Board Member Esther Williams read our mission statement.
The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing in education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thank you very much, Esther. Now, we will move on to Exhibit A, which is a public hearing for the 2324 School District calendar. And this is a notice of the public hearing, in accordance with the Iowa code, that the district, well, it's held today at 5:00 at our board meeting here, 1516 Washington Street in Waterloo. And the public hearing was published in the Waterloo Cedar Falls Courier. The district is proposing a rolling start date to the school year as follows. August 23rd of 2023, grades K, 1, 2, 6, and 9, and August 24th, all other grades. And we'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to that?
Can we say anything during this time?
Yes.
I was just going to ask how it has gone, like, this year, since we just started doing this staggering, what, two years ago or something? Jared, do you know how it went this year? Did the staff like it? Is that...
Yeah. Those questions probably will be more appropriate when we have it as an agenda item.
Oh.
Yep. So, yep.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll write it down.
Thank you. So, anything, we have that written down. We'll be back to that, Stacy. Any, any, any public that has any questions on those proposed dates or comments? Okay. Hearing none, I will get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor? Oh, roll call vote on this, sorry. Janelle Ewing?
Aye.
Esther Williams?
Aye.
India Johnson?
Aye.
Jesse Knight?
Aye.
Stacy Mills?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Sue Flynn, so the motion is carried 6-0. Thank you very much. Now, we will move on to the great celebration tonight, which lots of our people in the front have. The First Robotics Celebration and their next trip to Olathe, Kansas. And we have Mr. Herb on here and lots of students that we're excited to hear from. So, I will get the, let me just see here, the motion on the table for the actual trip. And the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve travel for East and West High Schools' First Robotic Team to Olathe, Kansas, from March 15th through the 19th, 2023, to compete in the Heartland First Robotic Competition.
So moved.
Second.
And can we have comments? And we look forward to this. It's so exciting.
Yeah, so, the, so we have a couple business items. So, that was the first one, right? And we need that approval. But more importantly, remember, we're celebrating that we've made the FPC team. So, first of all, let's back up to this. We have two robotics schemes at the high school. The FPC, First Tech Challenge, and FRC, First Robotics Competition. So, we have a couple minutes of robots in the hall. Dr. Smith, you haven't been around for a while, so if we can do this normally, come back and celebrate. We're a little premature in the sense that we have the state championship for the FPC robot this Friday and Saturday. So, that, we do our normal field trip stuff that we get approval for. But for the out-of-state trip, obviously, we need to come to you. And this is the next meeting before that trip. So, we greatly appreciate you allowing us to take seniors and a couple underclassmen for that. The reason why we're doing that is the First Robotics Competition was canceled because of COVID. Two years, so some of those seniors missed out on the opportunity to be in the Cedar Falls. Plus, we've got a great group of John Deere mentors. I think you've also seen that we won the John Deere Inspired Team Mentor Award.
Yes.
Myself, and then we had mentors stand up, Alec Erickson and Nick Heinz.
Awesome.
Nick, you'll remember, had been on our team for a year, summer intern at John Deere. Now, is back working full-time at Deere, and now is also coach for the team.
Awesome.
So, we really fulfilled that cycle in both John Deere, Warland School. You know, we got a great education with them in Purdue. And why don't you guys say it? These stuff. And Nick pretty much covered it.
You can come up to the mic, please, and make sure the green button's on. We want to hear from you two, too.
There we go. Dick pretty much covered it. Like I said, I was a student on this team three and a half years ago. I went off to Purdue University, got my degree in mechanical engineering technology and electrical engineering technology. I'm now back at John Deere as a control system engineer, and figured I'd help out the team again. And I've been hired on as a coach, and I've been helping out ever since January this year.
Awesome. That is just awesome. Do you do anything out at the Career Center with recruiting students out there, too?
Not yet, no.
Okay. You need to. Okay. Okay.
Well, like the wonderful enigmatic Mr. Herbann said, I'm Alec Erickson. I, my family are longtime friends of the Herbanns. He got me started in robotics in elementary school up in Denver back when I was 11. And I went through that, went through it in high school, graduated in 2015. I just graduated with an engineering degree from Iowa State. And I'm now a full-time data engineer at John Deere and a coach for these hooligans. Yeah. First Robotics, great program. Gives you a lot of really, really good hands-on engineering experience you would normally only ever get in an actual job environment, practically for free, so.
Thank you.
Thank you both very, very much. We're excited. I mean, it gives students to see what your future can be. I mean, look at these two guys that were in the exact same position as you guys were. And look at them now. Maybe, right?
And more importantly, I get to eat dinner with my wife more than maybe twice a week. We'd like to have a quick demo out in the hallway, if that works with you guys.
Sure.
Because we need to make this quick, because we've got to get back and work on these robots.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll head outside, and then we'll come back in.
Sure. Great. So, while they're, while we're moving, we're probably going to have some of the rest of these students introduce themselves to you when we get out in the hallway.
And the question was asked, why do I wear the hat? It's part of our team image. If you look on the back of some of the team shirts, I'm a sponsor of the team.
Back into meeting, and we have to take a vote on this. So, all in favor of accepting the robotic team travel, please state aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries 6-0. We're excited to see how they do and, and how they come back, and hopefully, they make it to Houston. That would be way cool, so. Way cool. Good job, guys, and mentors, and John Deere. So, it takes a village. Next up is our time for information from individuals and delegations. So, before I go through our whole caveat, is there anyone here that would like to address the board tonight for any issue that you can sign up with Ms. Arndorfer or that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, then we will go on to our next item, and that is the consent agenda. And tonight, that consists of five items. Item C, excuse me, which is the minutes of the February 13th regular board meeting. Item D, which is personal appointments and adjustments. Item E, bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings. Item F, donation from RJ McElroy Trust. And item G, the contract for financial audit services. Are there any items board members would like removed?
F.
Item F, okay. And I would say item G. Okay? Anybody else? All right. So, could I have a motion, please, to accept items C, D, and E from the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries 6-0. The next thing, then, would be item F, and that's the donation from McElroy Trust. And the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education accept with gratitude the donations in the amount of $5,600 from the RJ McElroy Trust for the 2223 Youth Emergency Fund as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
And discussion, please.
I just want to acknowledge and just say thank you. Again, McElroy has always been a huge supporter of the schools, and this just shows how much they continue to support us. So, thank you very much. That's always helpful.
Yes. And, and again, I think that often, they give gifts also, that we got notices on that don't meet the criteria to come to the board meeting, but they, they give gifts very often to us. And so, they are much appreciated and, and just help, help our students and help the district in many ways that isn't always as public. So, we just thank them for that. So, all in favor, then, of accepting the gift from McElroy, state aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries 6-0. The next item is the contract for financial audit services. And the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education accept the recommendation from the Finance Committee and approve the bid from Bergen KDV Limited of Waterloo, Iowa, to provide independent financial auditing services for fiscal years '23 through '27.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. And I just wanted to bring that to the forefront, that we have used Bergen for the last five years. And typically, we would go out for bids, and we have gone out for bids, and we didn't get any bids because of the timeframe and the costs of going up. And so, Bergen, then, and staffing issues. I did have a question on the motion. Is, is this the same Bergen that we had out of Mankato? Because it says out of Waterloo, Iowa. That was my only question.
That, I don't know.
Yeah. Okay. I should have presented that to Michael, sorry. So, we can just get that clarified, but they did come down from Mankato, Minnesota, and do our audits and did a wonderful job. The district, through the five-year period, did, we got real proficient at getting them the stuff they needed, untimely matters, and it, it worked very well. So, would you concur, Esther? You're on finance also?
Yes.
Okay. So, just, we will, we will find that for sure, as far as the location of the Bergen office. But all in favor, then, of accepting...
I was going to add, so like, the five-year thing, it's not a board policy, anyway. It's like a kind of best practice that we use. So, do, is there any board policy language about it at all?
The statewide, I think, recommends that you make changes after five years, but it's not a board policy. And then, I think some of it is also, you have to be able to provide the services. And if we don't have people, you know, wanting to provide the service for us and bidding on that, you know, we have to go with what we have also, because it is a very timely process. But, so, no, we are not, you know, that's just what we had done.
I think how it was explained before was just getting different eyes on it.
Mm-hmm.
Not, not having the same firm do it. Just getting some, some different eyes on it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
It's the timeframe.
Yep. Yeah. Okay. So, all in favor, then, of accepting... Okay, so all in favor then of accepting Bergen as the auditor for the next five years? Please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries six zero. So next up is the Exhibit H and that's the 2324 School District Calendar. And the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the 2324 Proposed School District Calendar.
So moved.
Second.
And discussion, please.
Jerry, do you remember my question?
So, yeah, that's a, the rolling start was new to me coming in, so I was kind of curious to see how it would go. I'm going only off of subjective feedback, you know, so I don't have any like hard data in front of me, but what I heard from a majority was that they appreciated it, that it gave them a chance, especially the kids, the transition kids, the sixth, the nine, to give them a chance in the building on their own to kind of ease them into it. Of course, there's going to be, there were some feedback that, hey, why don't we bring all the kids back at the same time? But overall, I would say the feedback that trickled its way up to me was mostly positive in favor of the rolling start. I can ask, you know, I don't know, you've had a little bit more discussion with the counter committee about what that feedback looked like, Stephanie?
Well, and our elementary principals especially appreciated having at least one day with our youngest babies in the building by themselves to just let them get acclimated. I think if you remember a couple of years ago, I think we had a four or five-day rolling start, so that was too many. And so we just narrowed it down to just the one day so that they at least get one day in the buildings. And our elementary principals were pretty vocal about that being helpful for their youngest ones.
I can also say like the sixth grade going in by themselves is also appreciative, like you going from that transition from fifth to sixth grade, I think that's really great. So I appreciate them doing that.
And the ninth grade, that's the day that like link crew takes the ninth graders around, right? Okay.
And kind of the way that I, my philosophy on making change is I feel like you need an overwhelming majority of people, like a really underswell of like, this is an issue. I didn't feel that at all. And again, that's kind of a sense you get, not, and I will always say, we're always wanting to look moving forward at what is, what best meets the needs of our kids and our staff. But I didn't get that sense that there was a need to make some sort of change in regards to those rolling start dates.
Oh, no, I think it's great. I just was wondering what the feedback was, you know, if our principals and staff were liking it too, and obviously they do, so.
I just had a question about March 29th. It's a no school day, no students in school. It just seems random because it's like the only one during the second semester, so I just was curious about that. March 29th, 2024.
I'm looking to see if that is, and I could be wrong, is that Good Friday?
Um, I thought April 17th was, but maybe I'm wrong.
Again, we've had several eyes on this, but that doesn't mean it's perfect.
Oh.
What's that?
March 29th?
I bet you it is.
Yeah, that'd be the right time.
I bet you it is.
Seems so late.
When it says buildings and offices closed, that's usually.
Okay. Okay, that makes sense then. It is. Okay, thank you.
Well, and just for planning families, the spring break will then be March 11th through March 15th of 2024. So if people want to get trips planned, they have a little jumpstart here, so.
I did notice, I think in past, if we had put on the graduation dates for the high schools, I don't see that on there.
Yeah, they're on here, 21, 22, and 23 on the secondary. So West High would be May 21st, East High would be May 22nd, and Expo would be May 23rd.
Okay, I'm looking at the first page and didn't see it. Thank you.
Yep, yep, so, yeah, but I do, I've heard from some families that really even with ninth graders, just having that day without all the big kids, you know, and I think that same with the elementaries and the sixth graders too especially, that, you know, you can just get, feel a little more comfortable just that day. So I think I really appreciate it as I hear from people, so. All right, any other comments on the calendar? And if you have questions, it will be published then after this, so it will be out for people to see, so.
Wait, when are you guys going to actually decide on one or two? Did I miss that?
Oh.
Nope, forget it.
Yep, yep.
You got me. Sorry.
I'm like, one or two? Okay, here we go.
I just love, we're done by May. There's no June day.
Yep, the last, yeah.
Don't jinx this here with the big snow.
May 31st is teacher half-day workday and half-day PD and you're done, June 1, you're done. So all in favor of accepting the proposed 2324 district calendar, state aye, please?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries six zero. Thank you. Next up is Exhibit I, which is the Arts Integration MOU. And we have Sharice Ortman here and Travis here and Stephanie to answer any questions. And the recommended motion is that the superintendent is asking us to approve the MOU with the Gallagher Blue Door Performing Arts Center at a cost of $24,620 as outlined.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
And go ahead, Travis, thanks for being here.
Thanks for having me, it's been a little while. So you'll see in the exhibit, I don't know if you've had a chance to read through it, but I wanted to let you know that we're celebrating a milestone anniversary. I don't remember what the gift is for 20 years, but it's a big deal. Iowa 2003, our partnership between Gallagher Blue Door and Performing Arts, the district, and the Kennedy Center on Washington DC celebrated our 30th, or our 20th, sorry, got a little excited, anniversary this year. So you'll notice that we have three teaching artist residencies. You might be wondering, what's arts integration if you haven't experienced it or felt it or seen it? Arts integration is an extension of general education content through the arts. So really, both subject areas are focused on. We celebrate both the art form and the genetic content. And so how that's taken form this year, I know that we've taken many forms over the 20 years. So I know that we've done moving through math in the past, we've done curriculum-based readers theater, and then COVID hit in a big way. And this partnership in the past really focused on like providing a small residency with drop-in strategies. And then aside from being systematized in moving through math and pre-K, K1 several years ago, COVID hit. We were gracious, or we were lucky enough to receive some federal funding. And so after a successful summer arts integrated experience with Arts Ignite, I had principals start to approach me about doing residencies. Brandy Welch at Becker Elementary approached me and said, I want Quinn Johnson. And I was like, okay. So Quinn Johnson is coming to us in March. She is a tap artist, Howard and Harvard grad. She is a black tap dancer, just doing her thing in the best way possible. And I got to tell you, shameless bug, sorry for everyone at home listening to me tell a story, but I picked her up, she was a pinch hitter for our summer experience. Someone had COVID from the crew, the original crew, I went to pick her up at Cedar Rapids on the Monday of summer school starting, picked her up at the airport. She gets to Highland, pops into the second and third grade class, puts on her tap shoes, instantly starts teaching. Halfway through, switches to Spanish for our kids. Our Highland kids were like, I know what she's saying. And so to have that moment, and then it just became a thing of community cultivated throughout. She's done a couple of other things with our English Language Developing Program, but at Becker she will be providing a third-grade experience around writing instruction, opinion-based, which I've learned the third graders are very opinionated, what child isn't. And then we will also be doing tap. Now, how I've reimagined some of these experiences, as they're impacting buildings, we're going to focus on a building or a grade level within a building so that we have some consistency and we can measure what that looks like, what that feels like, all those things. We will be having a Tuesday night district-wide professional development that folks can come and just check it out and experience. And then Thursday night, every part of a residency that I manage, there will be a family night component. I think our families need to see what we're doing, why we're doing, and with what resources we're doing it with. I'm really lucky to work with Jennifer O'Nebo. Amy Hunselman was in the position prior and now she's upstairs in this office. But Jennifer is super focused on community as well, and so we've been really lucky that we met with the Becker team and then we were like, wouldn't it be cool if we could do a workshop, like a real workshop for grad credit, renewal credit, all those things? And for our pre-service teachers who we hope to be future Waterloo employees. And so our goal is we're offering this half-day PD here in March, we're not quite there yet, yes, in March, to do a day of arts integration learning. So we'll have Christina Farrell at Throughline Arts down in Cedar Rapids, she's Wolf Trap-trained, early childhood focus. Aqui in the back will be doing a session. I will be doing one, Steve Kerrigan and Jennifer will be doing one, and then Quinn will do a keynote and a couple other on like tap literacy and tap math. And our big thing too is our Grow Your Own program. We're attempting to work with local artists to get that school feel and then we hire locally to better have reflections of the community in our schools as we're doing this work. But we know that that's going to take some time, right? And we don't want to put all of our eggs in that basket, especially with the price of eggs these days. So we really want to make sure that we, you're welcome for the bad joke, everyone, I'm here all week. Thanks, Janelle. Anyway, so. Oh, thank you. I'm going to continue now. So anyway, like the whole plan is I've noticed we need to get the community engaged in these ways and our kids engaged and to have Ryan and Jen in the back. We've been talking, I design residencies on talking to the teams and determining what are the general education needs? And how do we make learning engaging that gets kids going? And so in working with them, Ryan and I have talked about doing some writing instruction throughout this, this seems to be a growth area for our students at the elementary level. You might be asking, what about secondary? I want to get there eventually, and I think Sharice and I want to get there eventually. But we know elementary is sometimes a great launching point. So in that, the MOU is there, I'm actually going to stop talking and invite Jennifer out to explain more about the MOU and all those good things.
All right, hello, everyone, it's nice to be here and explain this really exciting program that we're working on. So you do have the MOU in front of you. A lot of the costs at the beginning are for the educational, for the teaching artists to compensate them for their time. And then we also have fees on there for the hotel, the pure DM, the airfare, and the car rental, and those are all necessary expenses because all of our teaching artists will be flying in. So those are based on university pricing, so we do send those out to bid, we will be getting the best pricing that's available per state standards. So I don't, does anybody have any questions about some of the costs on there?
Did you guys get a grant for any of this or no?
We have a small McElroy grant that'll help cover that workshop that Travis was talking about. Yeah.
I did have a question and both either one of you can answer, was the choosing of schools. I know, okay, I think we all have that question. And have, in choosing the schools, have each school been touched in the last couple of years, the years that we've been doing this?
Layered question, thank you for asking. So I think part of it is we had the momentum earlier with moving through math and that was kind of systematic between. What I've noticed is that we've had this partnership, but we haven't really talked about this partnership. And so what I've found is I've gone to buildings that have sought me out, or I've done a soft pitch, or I've done works in their building. And so really this opportunity after talking to Dr. Mohorn, too, is open to any building that wishes. These were just the buildings that approached me first and have my full and undivided attention. Last year, we did a mini Grow Your Own at Kingsley, which was really cool with a first grade class about visual artists and kind of performance art person came in and we did how schools, where how schools are and how schools could be as part of the social studies standards. And it was really cool because Kingsley, as we all know, has a rich history. And I think some of the teachers were even in the yearbooks in the past and we had old pictures of the school and so the vibe there was just really, really cool. And so I think as this work gets noted, our long-term goals, and I think in discussing this with Ryan and Jen and Stephanie, is we want this in every building and we want kids to really experience regardless. And I would like, at Lincoln, I have a residency happening in fifth grade, which, oh, it's going to be so good. Dr. Sierra Kaylor Jones is doing storytelling and writing and they're doing memoir in fifth grade. I think the really, really cool thing about Waterloo and recognizing like, we struggle having teachers of color and we can currently hire teaching artists of color and support the community. And Sierra is a black woman who's going to be working with an all-black team at, or at Lincoln, and I'm just really excited for how that's going to feel, especially after the Be Bold stuff. I've seen that celebration of identity. So I'm just saying, in that situation, there's going to be a fifth grade experience, but then the other grades are going to get mini experiences. And so that's like the end in mind is how do we make this sustainable financially so that I can just plan these and work with teams and then we have them going throughout the year to just kind of cultivate those experiences? I am focusing on theater and dance because we do have compulsory K5, art and music, and then music and art are often electives and theater doesn't enter until high school.
I think it's super important that you've brought these people here because, you know, kids at an elementary level can only do certain skills and doing them day after day can get, you know, can get pretty tiresome for them, but they get to see through these experiences what can be done with tap, what can be done with dance, what can be done with theater, what can be done with the trumpet, what can be done with drums, what can, you know, and inspire them for continuing on at the skill level that they're at.
Yeah. I'm going to also add, I looked at Quinn's resume, very extensive, like, oof, she's coming with some heat, I'm excited to see her.
Yep.
I'm hoping that because we're doing this and we, as you said, that you want to get all schools involved and we are going to, we're doing a big push of Being Bold, which you just mentioned, I'm hoping that we can show our community this. I hope that we feature this on social media. I'm hoping that we can share this so we can have some, so our community has some idea, like, as you mentioned, we don't have a lot of people of color who, as far as in the classroom, but we are hiring these out, so we need to see this. So hopefully, that whole filming and all that is portrayed and we see this, so I think it will be pretty important. And I will also add, this is just as important as the Life Labs that we've been doing with Amy. So if we're going to fund and support Life Lab, this should just be under the same umbrella. So I think this is fantastic.
Fantastic. And getting excited about April's, Dr. Kiana Cuts, we had to reschedule her residency because she got Janet Jackson tickets on her anniversary and that's a whole thing. But I said, you do you. But she's a playwright, so we're going to have Fractured Fairy Tales at Lou Henry. I'm just really excited about this. It's, that vowel renewal has occurred and I think we're just really both excited about what's to come for our community. And so if you know artists in the community, have them reach out to me and I will get them set up for our cohort that we're looking to develop and all those things. But there's that MOU. Any other questions?
Thanks to Gallagher Blue Door as well, thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate the partnership and look to expand it even more. I think there could be great opportunities for middle and high school, so awesome.
We've got to start training kids to be appreciators of art very, very young and this is part of the process.
Okay, all in favor then of approving this? State aye, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries six zero. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is Exhibit J, which is the Vocal Music Curriculum Adoption. And we also have Travis here for that. Okay, okay, okay. Well, we had an amended item with the pricing and then I was just looking through it and I was trying to figure out where you got the amended pricing. So Pam?
Oh, we got another amended? I love this. That was a great question. And of course, I didn't bring that specific item. It's probably that one, and I just can't read. Yeah, ones and sevens. It's all my fault.
Okay.
Again. I did that on purpose. They need to know that I struggle with.
I did that on purpose. They need to know that I struggle with ones and sevens. Thank you. Count to four, friends. Again and again. The original, the OG, if you will.
Okay, good. That's what I was thinking.
It was saving money.
So we are going to move on with the superintendent's recommendation that the Board of Education approved the curriculum purchase for secondary vocal music at a total cost of $85,170.46 as outlined.
So move. Second.
Thank you. And go ahead, Travis.
Same thing as, I feel like I'm giving a new episode of a show after school or something. Much like the high school band directors and orchestra directors this last time. The secondary vocal folks, sixth through 12th grade, are looking at using Music First, that online platform. Each teacher will have their own kind of class account. And then each student will have an account. We have some added platforms on there. Soundtrap is a beat-making, music composition software. Flat.io is a more traditional Western European notating software as well. Both are to write music for different kind of audiences. And then.
Hang on just a second. Did you have a question?
Nope, keep going.
Sight-reading factory is to help improve music literacy. The overall goal is students read something for the first time using, throw it back to Maria in Sound of Music, that do re mi stuff. That is normally what they use to help figure out if a note goes up, down, stays the same, as well as what letter name it has. We can assign students different assignments to help them become more independent in their musicianship. And just give them kind of the tools to better support. The 33,591, we went through and we determined. I worked at Hoover prior to this position and I inherited a veteran teacher's 30 years of music. You might know that if you've ever gone into a similar situation, there are some dated materials. And so what we did is we went and chose what class sets of octavos or sheet music would look like for each of our middle schools predominantly. Two-part music, soprano alto, your sixth grade unchanged voice. Tenor bass music, your changing voices, male voices, good old puberty. And then soprano alto choir or three-part mixed stuff is in there too. It was all determined based on building kind of enrollment, knowing that their annual budgets could support any additional purchases if needed. Also, audiovisual equipment for good concert recordings or rehearsals were included there. And clavinovas, the keyboards. Excuse me, I received a quote from Jeff Taylor at West Music. We're good to go there. They always service us. So those are those.
Are those the same keyboards that we bought for the band? Are they different?
No, these will be like the teacher keyboards. So it'll be 88 weighted keys, but it'll be like a more of a bulky situation that's more durable and has bells and whistles like transposing. If something's too high, we can take it down for them. It's, it's a souped-up version of what we approved in the songwriting lab or the piano lab, which will just last longer and take care of students that want to play it when you don't want them to.
I have two questions. Why eight years? Eight point five. That seemed like a long time. Quote is for eight point five years with implementation to begin this year. That just seemed like a long time for, before another change would happen.
We did it mainly because our curricular cycles got a little off for a while there with former curricular directors. And so eight years is the typical. It seems, with a little guidance or flexibility in there.
I just don't want to wait 30, but eight just seems.
Yeah.
And also, how is it that, how is it going with what we approved for band? Could you mean that we approved for the band and the beats and all of that? How is that going? The response and stuff like that?
Response is really good. Kids seem to be creating, I think, an orchestra student at West recently had a piece of theirs performed in their songwriting stuff. As far as like Music First, the platform, we are still awaiting Michael's account code so that I can get this purchased. And then we'll do a full training probably at our March PD to help fully implement and then build in those steps. It seems like things are going really, really well, like Smart Music. We've had, been able to make some upgrades. Teachers are able to assign more easily, give feedback in the moment. It seems to just be a healthy, it's like taking a multivitamin, I guess. Is, it seems like we're really supporting those things. And we'll see the returns in years to come. I'll work on another. I'll work on another. That's all I got right now. What else? I'm having fun now.
My, my question is, how do you choose on a curriculum, a music curriculum?
That's a great question. And that's a loaded question. Thank you. So there's not often, it's typically like curriculum sets in elementary. And then at the secondary level, it's really based on our training. And then the demographics that we serve or the communities that we serve to be responsive. Because we don't want to sing the same songs every year. So really, it's building these choral libraries like we're doing with this ask to then ensure that we can program pieces throughout. I also had the team kind of go through and just determine like, what are the big rocks? And the question that I keep coming back to, maybe it's a little too philosophical. But I think about, how do kids music after they leave us? Like, how do we get them to engage, knowing that they may not ever have an instrument again because we've provided it? So like in the vocal setting, you can sing in your place of worship. You can jam with friends. You can sing as best as you can in the shower or the car. And so really, it's, I guess to your answer, it's very challenging. And it really takes like split decisions. We built, we build the sandbox and we're filling it with sand. And then the materials that we're using, the music and the tools, the audio equipment, is how we shape that sand to then play for that time. Does that answer? Okay, thank you.
Would it be fair to, would it be fair to say that the big rocks we're talking about are like the standards? But you don't want to replay a standard. You don't want to re-sing a standard when a kid is still in the curriculum. So every four years, you can't do the same choral songs, the same orchestra or band songs. And then these other things that help with sight reading and help with musicianship, they're just kind of the stuff that goes in between the big rocks. And, and help with the fundamentals so that you can do bigger rocks next, next cycle around.
Yeah, if I'll go for another, it's like a permeable driveway and we're just adding the little bits along the way so that things seep through to bedder the earth, but we also have a solid foundation. I do have two middle school vocal teachers. I got Luke Overton at Hoover and Hugh Brown at Bunker.
And you're in full agreement of these adoptions? Okay. All right. Any other questions then? Or do you guys have any comments?
That's up to you.
You have to, please come up, yeah. And just announce your name, please, too.
So I'm Hugh Brown. I started at Bunker roughly a year and like a month ago. And walking into this program, there was nobody in this position. I was still finishing my degree at Warburg, interviewed in January, started in February. And there was no one in that position.
Bless you. Bless you.
Thank you. And there's, just coming into it, seeing that massive hole of just quite literally nothing. Like I finished my two weeks of onboarding paperwork and stuff. And then I was given five students because that was how many were wanting to do vocal music. And that was about all the resources I was given. That was about all that I had. And there's a whole lot of trying to meet the students where they are at. Because where they are at was not traditionally where eighth grade quote should have been at. But they hadn't had a teacher for a year. Retention goes away really quickly when they don't have routine. And so looking through the library over this last year, cataloging all my stuff, just getting an idea of what we do have. I have two file cabinets completely full of three-part music that my students simply are not capable of yet because there was that gap for so long. I have maybe a drawer and like a little bit of two-part music that is challenging for them, but doable. And so going through like a lot of the copies, we were hoping to have a lot more copies of two-part music as opposed to three-part music to help fill those gaps that they've been missing. One, because of COVID, which destroyed everybody's numbers. And two, just, and the other extraneous issues.
It's really hard to keep the students engaged when the material that's in your classroom is too hard for them. And they haven't had the fundamentals to be able to do something with that material. So thank you for the work that you've done.
Or also trying to sing three-part musics when you have five kids in the classroom. That's, one person's a solo, two people doing their best. And when I started as well, I had three students who were still in the ELL program. One of them with no fluency in English whatsoever, trying to build that, so.
Keep going. Don't give up.
So how many students do you have now?
Yes, what are your numbers?
How many students do you have now?
We went from zero last year, I mean, the five that he mentioned, to 48 this year.
Nice.
Luke?
Yeah, Luke Overton, Hoover Middle School. I could speak to the Music First and especially like the Sight-Reading Factory. Like Janelle was saying, it's a wonderful piece that supports kind of the big goals and the big ideas we have with the music that we're performing. When we went to spring break in, in 2020 and then never came back again, it was Sight-Reading Factory that kind of kept me able to engage my AP Music Theory kids. Sight-reading is a part of that exam. And when we left, they were just getting into kind of cramming for the exam prep. And then there was no more teacher right in front of them. But that platform with the student packages that are available allows me to kind of tailor assignments and assessments and send them to the students. Because a lot of times what really happens is we don't get a true idea of what they can do because there is a lot of nerves and apprehension with singing in front of somebody. It's a pretty personal act. And when you put especially middle school students who are at the peak of insecurity and say, we'll just sing it in front of 40 or 50 of your friends, that often doesn't get us good results. But with this, we can decentralize kind of the, the classroom is the only location that this can happen in. And they can do this at home. They can do it in a practice room. They can access it on their phone. Any place that they really have internet connectivity, they can engage with the materials that we assign. It allows you to differentiate it out. And I can pick different levels for different students. So we can support somebody who is brand new to singing, all the way up to our students who are AP Music Theory students and off to college in a, in a semester. And it, the same platform engages both of them just as rigorously. So it's a pretty tremendous advantage for us.
Cool. Awesome. Thank you for that explanation. Okay. Any other questions by anyone at the board? All right. So all in favor of the curriculum purchase for the secondary vocal music, please state aye. Chair votes aye. Motion carries six zero. Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate it.
See you soon.
The next item on our agenda is Exhibit K, and that's the CMS pool piping. And the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the quote from Breckay Mechanical Contractors for the Central Middle School Piping Replacement Project at a cost of $42,600 as presented.
So move.
Second.
Okay. And I think Zach had offered any questions? I don't think anybody had questions on the project, did they? As far as, can anyone facilities update us anymore? I guess that'd be India or Jesse if.
Yes, we have some aging hardware there that needs to be replaced. And it's our primary pool for our competition. So, you know, we're doing some better work in there. Timing makes good. We're replacing the bleacher stuff. So take care of some of these maintenance items. Obviously, it's been pipes in there since '72 and.
When will they be doing it?
The summer, if I remember correctly.
Perfect. And then it'll be ready for fall swimming?
Yes.
Perfect. All right. Any other questions then? Okay. All in favor of accepting the Breckay Mechanical Contractors for the Central Pool Piping Project? Please state aye. Chair votes aye. Motion carries six zero. Our next item is Exhibit L, and it is the East High School Gym Floor. And the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the quote from Egan Supply Company for the East High School Gym Floor Refinishing Project at a cost of $33,574 as presented.
So move.
Second.
And any discussion on this? Again, Zach kind of went over what was going to go on, so.
Just that we are going to be assured this isn't going to be a repeat of.
We talked about that.
Well, this is a lot different than, so my, my one question is. Did we approve, when we approved the West High, did we both approve, did we approve both of them together?
No.
So it was always just separate?
It's always been separate.
Okay.
Yep. We knew we were going to have to do both, but we had, we staggered them.
Okay, that was my question. I couldn't remember if we, I know we talked about West being first and then East. But couldn't remember if we approved both of them at the same time.
We had, the weight rooms were approved at the same time.
That's, okay. Okay, all right.
And then with this Cunningham bid in here, what is that part? Cunningham Elementary Rubber Gym Floor?
I think that was just a separate, something else that Zach might be looking into that happened to be on the same bid paper. Yeah, that's not part of this at all.
Okay, that's, I was just wondering why that was included. I didn't see anything about Cunningham, so, yeah.
Yeah. And we had three bids, you know, two are pretty close, so that's a good sign, so.
And can somebody on the facilities talk about the difference in what West High? The difference in what West High did, had done to their gym floor? And what we're proposing for East and the reason why?
My understanding, if I, if I remember right, where West High had already been standing down to the point that you couldn't stand down anymore without the nails coming up. And East Four is not in that position where like the nails are above. Where you know, you're only, we stand off, you're only taking off so much, very thin amount. But there's still a point that can stand down and refinish where it's at. So it doesn't require a full tear out of lumber and replacement, so.
And both, all the bids all agreed that East was very well taken care of. So they were like, you don't really have to go all the way down like we did with West High.
And would the amount of usage have anything to do with that?
I don't know if the usage as much as, you know, variation in materials, you know, over time. Yeah. Utter things, probably, you know, moisture in buildings would probably impact how much you got to grind to get it flat and stuff, so. No, they actually had some positive comments on the condition of the East Gym, so it was good.
And I would suggest that Zach sent out the graphics. He didn't, but they look really great on what they will do for East, so.
Okay. Any other questions at all on that project? It'll be exciting to see. So that'll be ready for the volleyball season. Be following that.
Do we know what the design will look like?
That's what I was meant, the design graphics. He showed us a.
Some proposals, you know.
They look really great. What if I look for? I think you will like it.
Okay. All right. Well, we will await your thumbs up or thumbs down, Astron. Okay. So all in favor then of approving the gym floor at East High, please state aye. Chair votes aye. Motion carries six zero. So that concludes our action items tonight. So we will now turn to Dr. Smith for the superintendent's report.
A few, few items to talk about. First of all, last Thursday, we, very interesting couple of days last week. Wednesday, we were off school. Thursday, students were already off, but we had conferences scheduled for that day. About five o'clock in the evening, our DLT was having a group text thread. And we said, we probably need to have a meeting Wednesday night. So we brought in our principals, brought in our DLT and talked through our options for Thursday. Felt really good about how we arrived at our solution, which was to allow our staff to work from home, but also to schedule conferences from home and to set those up virtually over the phone or in person at a later time. I just want to say thanks to our staff for being super flexible. That was, again, a decision that went out at about 7:00 PM Wednesday night to pivot to the work from home option for, for most staff. And then also the, the conferences that were either virtual or rescheduled. So I heard, and again, sometimes I have to realize the news that gets to me is usually on the goods. Hey, great. have to realize the news that gets to me is u- usually on the goods, hey, great job, good call. But I do feel like a lot of our staff were very appreciative. Um, probably got two dozen messages either through text, email, or in person about actually how well Thursday went, given the circumstances, so. I just want to make sure I said thank you to our staff and our administrators for adjusting at the last moment.
I was just gonna ask, so like, I didn't get any new invites for conferences at the high school level from staff. So do you know, is, is the impetus on the parent and the student at that level? Or are teachers gonna be resending that stuff out or?
We got them to do.
You did?
I think it's the teachers.
Okay, you got new ones?
I got everyone, everyone got new. Yeah.
So we, that was a, yeah, check again. That was the discussion we had was who does drive that? And our principals were very, and I even raised that question. Um, they felt very confident that if they entrusted their teachers to send out those invites and re, and schedule and they felt like they'd get it done. Um, so maybe check again or I, I, you know, feel bad if that didn't happen on your end, but most of the feedback I received was that it worked out okay.
Her email too, that might be.
Yeah.
Mine came from my own email and it was usually within form of, you know, we're doing virtual, if you would like to reschedule it as a virtual, let, let me know and, you know, we started listing out times and that's how most of them came in, but they came to mine, mine, not necessarily the show.
I got all the, the initial ones. I just, but it's all right. I'll think through it. As long as it wasn't, as long as it wasn't a big thing. I was just asking how that.
So again, thanks to our staff, uh, and really across the district. I mean, not just teaching staff, but for all employees who were able to pivot on tho- those two days away from school, but also get the work done that needed to be done on those days. Really appreciate it. And also thanks to eight, you know, kind of a headache for HR. I got Anthony sitting over here, but he was very flexible with us on making things work. And it takes in order to pivot like that at six PM the night before, you need an open-minded HR department in making it work, so I appreciate that very much. Um, one thing I've been excited about is, you know, Dr. Lindeman for years has been doing lunches with Lindeman. And today, I think I finished my last one, I think. Close, I'm close, I'm very close. Maybe, maybe there's one left, but either way, I, that was one thing that Dr. Lindeman did, was she would like once every few weeks would go to a building and eat lunch with students and just talk to them, ask questions. It's been easily one of my most um enjoyable um practices that I get to do. I mean, today I went over to Lowell, we just talked for thirty-five, forty minutes and I kind of let the students drive the conversation and we just and like, hey, what's hot, what do you want to talk about? And we kind of go around the table and share our thoughts on a variety of topics. So I always try to like share, I always try to, on social media, I'll share like, here's the topics that we discussed. Some of them are pretty um, you know, pretty to- top, topic is very, makes a lot of sense. Sometimes we get off a little bit, but it's kind of fun, so. Um, so today we had a debate, what's better? Adventureland versus Lost Island? And it was a very heated debate. Um, Lost Island won for, won the final vote, four to two. Um, so yeah, so props to uh Lost Island there locally. So again, thanks to Dr. Lindeman for uh, for coming up with the idea and I've just really embraced it. Um, we had a chance to watch the, the West High girls' team today. Didn't get, quite get the uh, the outcome that we were hoping, but uh they still a great season. Um, you know, I, I had a chance to be the guest coach for the girls' team a couple weeks ago and that was the winningest senior class they've ever had come through the building. Given the history, I mean, I grew up in Waterloo and throughout, at least through the nineties up till today, that we've had a his, the tradition's been on like unmatched, really, in terms of across the state, so to know that this senior class has won, I forget how many games it is, but eighty-plus, eighty-four, something like that is just saying a lot. But on the, you know, that's a bright spot. Even the brighter side is that last week, our West High, West High Bowling Team, the boys' team, won the three-eight bowl, boys' championship. And then on the girls' side, we had a Cadence Hyde won the individual title for Waterloo East for two-way. So the cool thing is, is we've talked with Dan Huff about, and a few others about recognizing and Sue and India, when we met last week, I think it was. Um, we said, hey, let's make sure we're recognizing these individuals, so we do have, either at the March meeting or maybe the April meeting, we're gonna do some recognition of some of our, some of our activities who have made it to the state level, so those will be coming. So I'm excited to kind of meet some of those individuals and celebrate their accomplishments, so. Those are my updates for tonight.
Awesome. All right, we'll start with Janelle.
Thanks to all the teachers, sponsors, paras, everyone for what they do. And thank you for everyone who puts in extra hours for all the activities for our students and creates opportunities for them.
Thank you. Esther?
Um, just piggybacking off what Jared said, congratulations to all the winter sports teams and individuals that had success um over the last few months. Um, now we're gearing up for spring and summer, um, so just make sure you keep those grades up uh and enjoy.
Thank you, Esther. India?
I also wanted to piggyback off what um Dr. Dr. Smith. Sorry, you said Lindeman. Sorry. But the lunches threw me off. Um, about the, the teachers pivoting on Thursday. I know that I was appreciative of those teachers who did reach out for conferences and just making it work and they did a fantastic job, so I just wanted to say kudos to you guys. Also, I wanted to give a shout out to Dr. Pappas. Um, when I was watching the game today, they uh mentioned him thirty-five years. And I'm like, that's pretty amazing doing what he has done for so long, so I just wanted to give a shout out to Dr. Pappas for being a um stellar coach in this, um, in Iowa, but just recognizing that he, all over the country, this man is known. So good job for doing that and being a um, being a coach in our community, so thank you for that.
Thank you, India. Jesse?
Yeah, I'm just, appreciation to uh Ryan and Jen earlier today, the, the visual aspect that dads are showing is really really eye-opening, but particularly that we're able to see it and we're able to track it district-wide and can break it down and drill down to that, I mean, you know, knowing that we got this combined in and we can really start processing it, you know, and look at it on a macro, micro level is really huge. And, you know, their efforts to do that, you know, and obviously we got some work to dig into the data, but you know, being able to know we have it combined, we got it compiled and work with that, manipulate it how we need to, to understand things is really huge, so I appreciate their efforts and their uh, I could use another hour of it, of it, so.
Yeah, it was very interesting.
Yep.
Stacy?
Um, I was gonna just ask, how did things work with having the, not just teachers, but the staff that would normally come in on a snow day get to work from home? I know that that's something we kind of piloted. When was the first time we did it? Do you know, Pam, when?
December, wasn't it?
Is that the first time we had done that?
Do you want my?
Yeah.
Opinion on how it went?
Yeah.
Fabulous.
Okay.
No, truly, it's, I feel like there's so many things that, um, I mean, it's kind of a a two-sided thing, like for, for me, for my position, it's really nice to be at home where I can work and really focus in on what I'm doing.
Yeah.
Um, I think in many aspects, um, probably, and I hear from quite a few people, that, man, I got a lot done. Man, it was nice to be home and really be able to focus on what I'm doing, so that's really good. Now, that being said, there's also things that really have to be done here at the office. So it's also nice to have that option that we can also still come in if we need to come in and do things too. So.
Good.
It's awesome.
Anthony, did you feel that it all went okay from an HR standpoint? The having staff that would usually come in on a snow day, work from home?
I think so, but I'm judging that based on the fact that I've heard no complaints about it, so.
So it went well, is what?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Um, and then I saw something in the legislation about teachers being able to get their license earlier and I didn't quite understand, does that mean that we would be able to hire student teachers? Is that? Did I?
I have not heard that.
And I haven't heard that it passed. I think it um.
No, it's just been brought out, yeah.
Yes, so, yeah, but I think that would be, it, I think it would um expedite the process through hiring if it did pass, yes, that, yeah.
I mean, for us, that's great with the teaching school so close, so.
Yeah, yep, yep.
And then finally, I um, I also wanted with the girls' basketball, also that the pep band got to go. Um, so it's, it's not, it's exciting for everybody, so having our, having our band folks go with them. It makes it, it makes it a much bigger deal to maybe some kids who wouldn't normally pay much attention to the sports, so.
And involves, involves more students in the celebration, yeah.
It does, so thank you.
They were shown on TV like numerous times.
So were the cheerleaders, yeah.
That's awesome. It is, so I just wanted to thank everyone who made that so inclusive.
Go back to, back.
Back to Esther.
I'm gonna say West High tomorrow. Okay. Okay, all right. Got that right here. Yeah. So on to that. Are you done, Stacy?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Um, tomorrow night, we have another chance to have a team um attend state. And West High is playing against Valley West Des Moines and it will be at six-thirty in the Marshalltown Roundhouse. They call it, it's a round building. And uh, they are looking for everyone to come. They want to fill the, fill the roundhouse, so it's six-thirty. And um, the Wahoarks could use your support and if they win, they will um go to the state tournament. And then another game right after that, eight o'clock, is the Cedar Falls game, so you'd be able to, I believe, stay for both games. I'm not sure if you have to pay again. I don't know, but. Just come to West game for sure, that's six-thirty PM at the Roundhouse in Marshalltown. And, and I just think it is such a cool opportunity, like these robotic teams here tonight and, and our athletes that get to go to pre-state or state tournaments. It's just an experience that they'll never, ever forget. And like one of the robotic gentlemen said, um, you're making really deep relationships. And I think that, that's so cool with our coaches, you know, thirty-five years, Dr. Pappas, you know, making deep relationships with our student athletes. And, and that's what it's all about, to see success, so. Even if you don't have all the wins, you still have success in, in your um personal life. So I just thank all of our coaches. Go support West High tomorrow. Um, our next meeting will be one month from today. We are taking um March thirteenth. We've canceled that meeting because of spring break, so people can enjoy that week off. Um, if indeed we need to call another meeting in between there, we can do that, so. Um, if something would come up, we would um potentially, you know, have another meeting, so. Yes, and that's it, so it'll be March twenty-seventh at five o'clock here. And with that, could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And, and all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.